Till that happens.
It has started.
It has started, thank you.
Okay, so calling to order the August 31st, 2023 special meeting of the Municipal Accountability Review Board. We are recording now. We have to follow the agenda strictly as it's a special meeting, so we can't open the agenda today. No new items. Does anyone have any opening? Well, I'll ask my co-chair from the Treasurer's Office. Do you have any opening remarks?
Oh, Mr. Secretary, thank you.
All right, that's great. So we'll move into our agenda. First item is the approval of the minutes from the July 13, 2023 regular meeting. Draft minutes were distributed with your meeting materials. Everyone should have had a chance to look at those. Make sure that they spelled your name right. That's the most important thing. Any comments, questions about the minutes? Happy to entertain a motion regarding approval of the minutes.
Your move, Luciano.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We'll move into our agenda. First item on our agenda is City of Hartford review and discussion of a non-labor contract. The city issued an RFP for auditing services for the period July 1, 2023 through June 30th of 2024. Two proposals were received. Clifton Larson Allen was selected. Their fee is $242,500 for the first year. There are options in the agreement to extend annually for four years. This is up for our review and I'm sorry, no action is required, I'm told. Any staff want to say anything else about that?
That is correct. Okay. No, but they did provide us with their contract being out for the three years and four years. And I would suggest that if this is agreeable, that the city should not have to bring it forth for the next three or four years as the contract stands as it is, and if they go forward unless there's some change.
So we've already approved the contract and don't need to approve it again?
We don't need to approve.
Okay.
I'm just saying that they don't have to bring it up annually.
Do we have to approve it today, though?
Nope, no, no approval, just review.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, concerns we want to express about this matter? Okay, well, hearing no questions or concerns, we can move on to City of West Haven Subcommittee update. The, there was a July Subcommittee meeting. I understand the Subcommittee toured three, the three fire districts, and staff can provide us a little update.
Yes, so I have to say that I think all of us that attended from the Subcommittee, four of the members went down to West Haven and toured three of those fire districts and as well as the OPM staff. And I think that we found it all very beneficial to do so. You know, from the overview of West Haven and fire service that they happened to receive. The reason for doing that is they have a request for ARPA dollars on some projects. And there is some great need there. And rather than, we'll, we'll talk about this in detail further on into the agenda. But, and, and give an opportunity for the other members to weigh in on this when we address it down in Agenda Item Small D.
Okay. Any members of the Subcommittee want to offer any comments? Okay, well, we'll take that up in a future item then. Next item on the agenda is the Moody's Investor Services affected credit rating. This month Moody's indicated that they're putting the City of West Haven on a credit watch. Staff can provide an update.
So West Haven was placed on a 30-day credit watch and for not filing their fiscal year 22 audited financial statements. This occurred as well last year, and the city and OPM and their audit firm, PKF O'Conner's Davies, and city members all have been meeting on a weekly basis to address an open items list as far as their audit is concerned. They have until September the 8th, a little more than 30 days to provide Moody's with draft statements. And that is what's being worked through as the highest priority right now for the city in the financial area. We've asked, you know, Whittlesley and other work to, to stop at this moment to make sure that they can address this. And I would then ask the city if they could provide some additional feedback. We will be meeting on Friday.
Is Mr. Taylor with us today?
Yes, he is. Good morning, everybody.
Morning, Danny.
Yes, as, as Kinnison mentioned, yes, we've been, it is our highest priority. And we have been producing a lot of reports and getting everything to the auditors. The, I had a conversation with Mr. Centafani yesterday. We had a couple of things to clear up, and we did. And he's, he made the comment that, yes, based on what we just talked about, we get certain things done. And we did. We would, he, he could see no issue blocking us from getting some draft statements from him. Now that the draft statements that we submit will be our, the city's draft statements. But he has generously offered to assist us in this sort of interim report on audited results. And so we are on target to receive those sometime this week. With plenty of time to turn them around and send them, send them on to Moody's and anyone else who needs them.
Questions from the board about this? Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, thank you. Do we have a projected date for when the audit will actually be completed, David?
So there are, nobody's giving me a date certain. However, within the realm of possibilities are the end, end of, end of field work to end sort of mid-September with end of October, I believe. Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that's my understanding of what we, the last conversation with Mr. Centafani.
Correct, as well as we, the city meets the deadlines of getting the materials by a certain time.
Which, which has been our number one priority.
Well, one of the reasons for the delay will also be the, the actuary reports, correct? Who needs six weeks?
Yeah, that's unfortunate. We've had a hard time getting the data that is needed. Another third party has produced a report, and I've sent significant amount of information to the actuary yesterday and this morning. There's just one little piece that's out there. I'm not sure of the resolution of it, but we're working on that today.
Great.
Mr. Hamilton, you good?
It always looks frozen.
Looks frozen. Mr. Luciano has a question.
Yes, with Moody's change of status, does that, will that increase cost for interest? Or, or do you have some time before that kicks in?
Yeah, so if we were to go to market at this point in time, which is unadvisable. Yes, absolutely. We would incur additional cost. And I'm sure a lot of coupon and everything else would be affected. However, we will not go to market. We, as you, as I'm sure you're hinting at the, we do have to roll, do something with our bands that come due the end of next month. The current plan is to roll those. We've already talked with the holder, and he has offered us five and an eighth with a bit of a coupon and, and it's, we've been working with our, our attorney and with our advisor. And the idea is five months and come back in November with permanent financing for that as well as the, the, the new bond ordinance, which was approved the other month. Ending, of course, a ratings call and favorable determination by Moody's, of course.
Other questions? Mr. Hamilton?
Yeah, could we get an update on the audit for 2023? I'm, I'm hoping that we're not going to find ourselves in this position again and that you'll have the 23 audit completed, you know, either by the end of December, which is what state law requires, or shortly thereafter. It's really only when you get so far out that these audit issues become an issue for the rating agencies. So can you tell us, you know, how the close on 2023 is going? And, you know, are, can you give us some assurance that this is not going to repeat?
I cannot assure you that will be done by December, that with the 22 audits still in, you know, in the wind. We are, we have, some of the things that we have sidelined are the final entries for 2023 because the 22 audit being the most important thing right now. I anticipate getting back on those things within, well, next week. So, you know, we, we should be working toward 23, finishing up during the next month. Getting Joe Centafani, sorry, Mr. Centafani and his team's time to spend with our audit as opposed to other audits that they're also working on for 23 today will be a challenge. I don't anticipate going past the six-month deadline, but I, I'm not prepared to give you a, a, a date certain on that. It's just, we need the auditor to be available and, and we know our staffing issues. We need to, we need time to be able to finish it up.
Other questions? Okay. If not, we'll move on to next item, which is review discussion, possible action on some labor contracts that the city has. First one's a tentative agreement. Do we have, actually, we have the late-breaking, this looks like a draft agreement that we have now.
It's a red line, yes. We had asked for that, yes.
Okay, very good. So it's the City of West Haven and local 1303 345 Council for AFSMI of the AFL-CIO. This is for Water Pollution Control Authority provisions. It's a tentative agreement signed last month. We have 45 days to take action. The package includes a tentative, tentative agreement and a summary of the cost impact with steps and hourly rate increases. And the city is here to provide an overview.
Good morning, this is Pam Albino. So this is one of our three open collective bargaining agreements. The first that we've reached a tentative agreement on, and it reveals just a couple issues related to the economics in reaching this agreement. In terms of wages, there is the tentative disposition to go at two and a half percent each year. Effective July 1, and forthcoming, looking forward to the next two years as well. And I'm just going to discuss the economics, which we're all concerned with certainly. That addresses the wages. And in terms of the cost share for the premium for the next three years, well, one, the first of the three years will, will remain flat in contributions, and we've increased the next year a full percentage, and then the following year a half percentage. The most significant result of these negotiations was that the union agreed to move to a bi-weekly payroll. And this is the first of hopefully three. We'll move forward in that positive direction. And there was an agreement to, for these 25 members, currently there are 25 members. And I think they're, they have been budgeted for 25 members for as far as I can see. That we would bridge that transition to a bi-weekly payroll and provide them with a $750 one-time payment for that. So there's that additional element of cost associated. And the, the total on that is around $18,000. And I think that was submitted.
Yeah, if I could add that, Pam has mentioned the things that are on the fiscal impact schedule. You probably have that in front of you all. One, two, two real big things that we wanted going into this contract were, were as Pam mentioned, to go to bi-weekly, and it's, it is our goal to get everyone to bi-weekly. By sort of breaking the ice with this one contract, we hope it paves the way, that's a mix, a mix of metaphors, sorry, to, to other unions. The other thing that we achieved was that they, we could go with direct deposit. They agreed to allow us to do that as well. You know, cost savings for just this one union is sort of negligible. But, you know, when we go across the entire field, it, it will be significant savings for, with both of these items. And paying out $750 to help our employees bridge that one week with no paycheck to get used to the larger paycheck every two weeks, I think is a very good concession.
So for the budget, for the current budget, this is accounted for?
Yes, we, as we built the budget, we did not put increases in the wage line, but we did increase contingencies because we knew we had these contracts under negotiation. So yes, it is covered.
Okay. And the five-year plan, it's got some impact. I know we haven't approved that, but.
Correct. It, it will have some impact, but as, well, just, just to remind everybody that there's significant amount of money in the contingencies for the five-year plan every year as well. So I do believe this will be covered.
Okay. Questions of the board concerning this labor contract? Well, then, I'll entertain a motion concerning approval. Mr. Luciano, are you?
Yes, motion to approve.
Okay, motion to, motion is made.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Comer. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We'll move on to the next item, which is review discussion, possible action on non-labor contracts. We have, let's see, looking for pre-authorization, I guess, use of ARPA funds for improvements at the fire stations or in the fire districts. And Ms. Kinnison alluded to the Subcommittee's field trip last month. And there's a, I guess, acquisition of properties related to the first fire, center fire district. Additional storage. Should we take these individually or as a package? Maybe we'll take them individually. We've done a little bit of this, haven't we? Sort of quote, pre-authorization, end quote, normally. I mean, the statute says approved contracts, but I don't know, I guess we're kind of giving the city our blessing to go ahead with these things. But I'll just entertain discussion about use of ARPA funds for acquiring two properties on Savin Avenue behind the 366 Elm Street Fire Station. Any explanation or discussion there?
Hi, this is Rick Spreyer. I'm not, I'm not sure if any of the fire chiefs are with us today or not. I see Chief Terenzio is, but.
He's the, he's the only chief that will be with us today. The other two chief have, have to attend a service. I did get a call on that.
Okay, so yeah, this is for the Center Fire District, which the West Haven Subcommittee was gracious enough to tour with us in July. This is to acquire two properties at the rear of the building, in the parking area, behind the parking area to allow for a safer, expanded parking lot for the fire trucks. Right now, we can't turn our trucks around in that parking lot. It's pretty congested back there with firemen parking, equipment, fueling station. So this would just help to alleviate some of that and give them a footprint for possible expansion down the road.
So you've got an agreement with the, with the owners, the abiding owners?
They've got an agreement in principle with those owners, and I think that's all included in
Okay.
the original packet I sent. I don't see it in this, but yes, they've got appraisals of each property. And I'd be happy to, I don't see it in this, but there, there's appraisal of every property and an agreement in principle with the owners to purchase the properties for the amount listed in the, in the cover sheet there.
Kim, do we anticipate that we'll get these agreements later and approve them?
Yes.
So we're just sort of, this is not.
I'm sorry, we're looking for the opportunity to just go ahead and, and get these contracts in place. And then, you know, if, if, if MARB would like us to bring the contracts once, once in place to you for approval before execution, we'd be happy to do so.
I think that makes sense.
Yes.
If I may?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, Mr. Taylor. So one of the things we want to avoid is additional expense of prep, of lawyer fees, et cetera, to prepare contracts if, if, you know, the MARB is, is, is not agreeable to, to the idea in principle.
I see. All right. Well, if anyone has a problem with it in principle, they can signal today. If anyone wants to comment or question or raise a, an issue. You know, if it's fair market value and you've got a arms-length transaction that's, you know, free of undue conflicts of interest, that sort of thing, then we would be okay with it. Mr. Hamilton has his hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, I did attend the Subcommittee meeting where we had the opportunity to tour the fire station properties. And, and after touring this property, I, I do agree that, that the site as it presently exists is really not large enough for their needs. And the fact that, you know, these properties are available, you know, I'm glad to see that they have gotten appraisals and the agreed-upon price is apparently consistent with those appraisals. So I, I do support, support this proposal.
Very good. Yeah, I think we'll let him bring it back to us, just so we can do a final vet, final due diligence on, on that. But, so that's that one. Allentown Fire District is looking for an additional storage building behind the Minor Park Fire Station.
Yeah, Chief Terenzio is here with us. He can elaborate on that for you.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first, I'd like to more appropriately call it a annex structure as opposed to a storage building. It's, it's a little more elaborate than just that. It's to house current ancillary equipment, which includes a new utility pickup truck, a, a marine unit on a trailer, which is currently stored in a Conex shipping container. And also, which is of more importance right now, is that recently the state legislature enacted Public Act 22-139, which requires the fire departments throughout the state to develop a remediation and maintenance of toxic substances on our turnout gear. Part of that plan is to have what we call gear extractors, which are essentially very large industrial-type washing machines and dryers, of which my district has none for the simple reason is that I have nowhere to put them. Currently, the act would allow us to use a neighboring district, such as the West Shore has one and the Center has one. But in order for us to do that on a more regular basis, as what is being lined out for in the public act, I have to take our already reduced limited staff from the northernmost reaches of the city all the way down to either the shore or the center, which then leaves our district up here a little exposed in case of emergency. This annex building will allow us to put a, put that equipment in and get equipment that's outside stored into a more deployable condition for emergencies to get our equipment deployed and protected, to protect our investment already. Thank you.
Chief, please explain also the situation with the big fire truck and the emergency vehicle when you have to get it out.
Thank you, Ms. Kinnison. That's also a very important subject. We have to play musical chairs very often. The current station is of only two bays, but are almost not quite full, too deep. When there's a fire call, we have five personnel on duty. When there's a fire call, the rescue truck gets what we call beached. In other words, we abandon it and put the rest of the, the staff on two suppression vehicles. In order to do that, one of the crew has to get into the rescue truck, drive it out, drive it around to the back of the station, while simultaneously the pumper pulls out. And then the fire, the rescue truck pulls in behind it, and then both staff get out and get on the pumper and then respond. It does reduce our effective response times to below sometimes that which is required by NFPA. We are shoehorned in the station. And what we plan on doing is a temporary addressing of what the ultimate needs are, which I also applaud the Subcommittee for recommending a feasibility study of the entire city for our stations in our facilities. I think that's going to help us further support the efforts of us trying to get a new station. But in the meantime, if we don't use this ARPA money, it's going to disappear by the end of next year. And I would have now lost another opportunity to improve our operational efficacy prior to us actually getting a new station, which I don't even have an identified piece of property on which to build it, even if I were able to get grant funding. I can't until I get property.
But this particular annex, you own the property, you're just looking to design and construct an addition?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Other questions about this facility improvement? Looks like the West Shore Fire District is going to expend ARPA funds for waterproofing the basement of the Ocean Avenue Fire Station and improvements to the living quarters and bathrooms at two fire stations. Do we have a discussion about that facility?
This is, this is the building where we had the actual Subcommittee meeting. The basement is continually prone to flooding. There are no changing quarters or bunk quarters for female firefighters. So the ARPA funds here would be expended to alleviate the flooding in the basement and to update the bunk and changing quarters for both fire departments to make them gender inclusive.
As well as they need updating.
Correct. There, it's a, it's a very, that's, the, the Ocean Avenue is a very, very whole station.
Okay.
One of the, one of the issues is, you know, one person gets sick, everyone gets sick. So it's just, you know, the ability to cordon off. If I could just add one more thing on all of these, we did pass these projects past our ARPA auditors, UHY, and they have, they have agreed that these are ARPA eligible, just, just to throw that in.
They sound like good investments. I don't have any issue with it.
Yep. The last item is the feasibility study that the chief alluded to. What do we hope to gain from that?
Well, I think the Subcommittee was a, it was a request of the Subcommittee that we wanted them to do this in order to support the short-term needs. But we really, within the Subcommittee, we really wanted them a, a master plan of fire service and delivery of fire service, looking at it not just, it's more holistic rather than, you know, this district, that district. What should they really be doing? How should they be able to react if they had a clean slate? And that's kind of really what we were looking for. Tom or Susan, and I don't know if Stephen is here, if you have anything to add?
Tom, Mr. Hamilton?
Yeah, sure. You know, I, I do think there, there's an opportunity here potentially to consolidate long-term some stations, particularly the Allentown Station. So although I support the annex or the, you know, the addition, because there is clearly the need for it, and it will be quite some time before there's an alternative really in place, but. the need for it and it will be quite some time before there's an alternative really in place, but um, it, it does seem both of those stations are really undersized and could potentially be replaced by one new station and eliminate uh, two existing stations. But, but again, as uh, uh, Kimberly indicates, uh, really, we want them to look at this holistically across the entire city uh, and see whether or not uh, there's any other uh, stations that potentially could be consolidated. Um, again, it may not be something they can undertake immediately, but I think it does make sense for them to look at that.
Miss, Miss Weiselman.
Thank. Thank you. Um, I was also uh, on the visits. I found them very informative. I support the projects and the notion of a uh, feasibility study for all the reasons that both Kimberly and Tom mentioned. We also talked about the center fire district really being at the core of the services provided to residents because of its location. So I think um, it was, it was a great visit. This will help advance how West Haven looks at the provision of fire services. Thank you.
Great. All right. Well, I think to the extent that any of these projects results in contracts over fifty thousand, we'll have a chance to do our due diligence when they bring those forward, but I think the board has uh, expressed what it has expressed today. So that's, hopefully that's guidance for all concerned. Uh, there are no objections. We'll move on into uh, discussion of the Sparks Security LLC Board of Ed Public School Security Services Contract. I understand this is a three-year contract commencing August first through July thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six between the Board of Ed and the Sparks Security Firm to provide security at West Haven Public Schools and the Board of Ed is here. Is that Mr. Cavallaro?
Yes, I'm here. Yep.
And will uh, you have the floor, sir?
Yeah, um, we, we actually, uh, we put out an RFP. We were really pleased that we had six responses to this. Um, there was a lot of back and forth and a lot of questions. Um, we, we got actually six responses um, to the, to the RFP. And uh, if, I believe you have the packets in front of you. Uh, Sparks has put out a very detailed plan as far as pricing and the scope of services they'd be providing. Um, and so far, um, you know, we just three days into the school year, but they seemed and they are ready, willing and able to live up to all that they've promised us. They've been on site. They've been touring our buildings and working closely with our administrative team. Um, frankly, we weren't pleased with the last company. Uh, we're actually paying more per guard, for example, than we are, uh, than we did the last time. But in my opinion, we had too many guards who weren't doing the job. Uh, we're paying a little bit more. We're getting a higher quality guard. Many of them, if not, um, uh, I would say the vast majority of them are retired parole or correction officers. Um, they have a, uh, seem to have a pipeline with the uh, Department of Corrections. Um, and they've, they've given us a really high-quality guard and um, you know, again, so far, so good. And we'll, we'll keep an eye on them as they continue to implement, implement their program.
Ms. Weiselman.
Uh, forgive my ignorance on this. Um, there's nothing that references weapons and my assumption was that the security guards do not carry weapons, but I was just curious about that policy.
That is correct. Uh, we have school resource officers that obviously carry weapons. However, the security officers don't.
And that's fine. I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, also crossed my mind. Thank you for that question. Um, what uh, issues do you see with security in your schools these days? Just out of curiosity.
Well, obviously the bigger the school, the bigger the problems. Um, we, a, a typical uh, large high school, problems in the lavatories, you know, keeping the hallways clean. Uh, you know, I don't think anything out of the ordinary where there were any major problems or confrontations. You know, keeping eye, keeping an eye on the cafeteria. Uh, at the elementary schools, it's mostly, you know, who's coming in, who's coming out to pick up their children and things like that. But again, as you get older, the problems get a little bit bigger, just like everywhere else.
But you're more focused on internal order as opposed to external threats?
Uh, yes, I, I think that would, would be where the police department would take over and, and other emergency services.
Okay. Other questions about this uh, contract? Then I'll, uh, we have to approve this, right? So I'll entertain a motion.
That we can also move.
Uh, moved by Mr. Luciano.
David Biller second.
Seconded by Mr. Biller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion appears to carry. Uh, motion does carry, I'll say for the record. Uh, we'll move on to the Sedexo Operations LLC and Board of Ed Public School Food Service Management Contract. It's a one-year contract with four one-year renewal options between the Board of Ed and Sedexo to provide food service management at the city's public schools uh, for one school year from July one-twenty-three to June thirty-twenty-four. Board of Ed is here to provide an overview.
Sure. Uh, Sedexo has been with us for approximately ten years. I believe this is the third um, time the, the contract uh, has been up for renewal. Um, for those of you that aren't familiar with uh, getting a, a contract approved with a food service vendor, there's pretty uh, strong oversight and scrutiny from the State Department of Education prior to us getting it approved. Um, we, uh, Sedexo's was one of two companies that actually um, responded to the RFP. You know, we felt that given their past history, um, the profits that they make for us, by the way, it is a very profitable service to us. It, it was a far superior bid. Uh, we did the back and forth several times with um, the State Department of Education, Department of Food and Nutrition. And uh, they have given the go-ahead in the approval of the contract and a, a, again, they've been a, they've been a good partner with us and we're looking forward to continuing with them.
Questions from the board? Mr. Hamilton?
Uh, yes, are um, are your food service frontline workers uh, district employees or Sedexo employees or a combination?
No, um, the management is a Sedexo team. The uh, cooks and frontline people are Board of Ed employees. They're members of one of uh, two unions, either UPSU or AFME. Um, they had a little in, internal dispute several years ago and they actually broke away. Half of the, of the elementary school workers broke away from AFME, so we deal with two uh, bargaining groups, but they're all Board of Ed employees.
Okay, so how many employees does Sedexo actually provide? They provide a manager and?
They provide a manager, an assistant manager, and I believe a part-time accountant.
Okay, and overall, do you think that works out pretty well having uh, uh, you, you don't have issues in terms of uh, uh, you know, who has authority to supervise their discipline or what have you or?
I, I'll tell you, Tom, that's a good question. Uh, when, obviously, when we first decided to bring in the management company about ten years ago, there was a lot of friction, a lot of, you know, you're trying to take our jobs away. However, I, I have to tell you, the relationship between the management team and our employees is, is wonderful. Um, we, we have no issues at all other than the, you know, the typical day-to-day, you know, little spats that come up. But I mean, as far as big-time uh, arguments or this is not my job, this is your job, none of that at all.
Okay, that, that's good to hear. Thanks.
Other questions of the board, from the board to the board about the Sedexo contract? All right, and in which case I'll entertain a motion. Wrong once?
David Biller, so moved.
Mr. Biller moves. Adoption, uh, approval of this contract. Mr. Hamilton seconds. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. A contract is approved by the board. Our next item is the uh, contract with CH Nickerson and Company Improvements to the Oyster River Wastewater Pumping Station. A contract between the city and CH Nickerson and Company to make improvements to that station. Contract amount is five million, five hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars. Uh, this is part of our state's Clean Water Fund Program. Uh, I understand the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection was involved in this process and is also authorizing the award of the contract to Nickerson. It's been reviewed by the city's engineer and the city's consultant, CDM Smith, and the city is here to provide an overview.
Uh, I think you provided pretty good overview yourself right there. So uh, I think that speaks for itself. Yeah, that's uh, uh, we, we put this out for bid. We had two bids received. Like you said, they were reviewed by our city engineer Abdul Khadir and CDM Smith, our uh, engineering firm hired to oversee the project. CH Nickerson was the low bidder uh, and uh, approved by DEEP. And you've also got a count of, a copy of the City Council approved bond ordinance for this as well.
Right. That's our next. Motion to approve the uh, contract with CH Nickerson and Company. Uh, do I hear second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Weiselman. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Uh, so the contract's approved. We do have the, let's see. Do I have to approve the authorization of the ordinance?
We do.
That appropriates six point nine-five million for the cost of upgrading the pumping station and the issuance of bonds to meet these appropriations. Uh, City Council, the mayor approved the ordinance. Um, let's see, the ordinance uh, authorizes that amount to meet the cost of the upgrades. Anything that I missed here? Ms. Weiselman has a question.
Thank you. Uh, just um, going by the discussion we had earlier in the meeting, these bonds would not be issued uh, until after the Moody's review is complete. Just confirming. Yes, no?
David, do you want to take that or?
Yeah, I don't believe so. Uh, this is Clean Water Fund, however, it's not subject to public marketing. It's so I, I, I don't think uh, waiting is even an issue. I.
Are these revenue bonds? As opposed to GO bonds of the city?
I, I'm sorry, I, I don't, I don't have an answer.
Okay.
But these are, these are bonds uh, that, that are handled with the Clean Water Fund.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, part grant, part, part loan, et cetera. Um, we've done this many times uh, before. We've got, we've several we're paying on.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure where they place them. Uh, I, I think they place them with banks.
Uh, yes, I'm comfortable with, with DEEP's involvement and uh, not only with the selection of the, of the uh, contractor, but also the, the amounts being provided. Mr. Luciano?
I just had the same uh, concern as to that. And if we can double check that it's, that, that not having the um, six Moody's, it just won't raise the amount of money that's required.
I confess, I don't, I don't know the answer to the question, but I, I think there is a different treatment for revenue bonds as opposed to GO bonds. Uh, GO bonds are much more sensitive to the credit rating. Revenue bonds are backed by a revenue stream, fees, et cetera. I just don't know what the answer is on that. I don't know if Mr. Taylor or Mr. Spire have an angle on that.
I, 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 I don't have a, a definitive answer. I'm, I'm just reaching out to our um, just reaching out to our, our consultant.
I expect we'll need an update at the regular meeting in September as to what happened with Moody's and the um, audit reports. So we can, maybe you can give us an update as to this bond issuance as well in a couple of weeks when we have our next regular meeting.
I, yeah, and I'm not sure of the uh, you know, we had it on the special meeting agenda, but I'm, I'm not sure that it had to be passed today. So I, that, I think that would be fine.
Okay. Mr. Hamilton?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I, I think i- i- you said, David, these are gonna be Clean Water Fund obligations? Is that correct? Yeah, so, so actually it, it's the state that will be issuing the bonds in this case.
Yes.
And, and I, I think the state probably packages them with a bunch of different municipalities and, and they probably, you know, get some sort of state uh, uh, affiliated uh, rate. But I, I think your interest charge is unless the state's changed uh, the program, uh, it used to be a two percent uh, you know, flat interest rate of two percent on clean wa, all Clean Water Fund obligations, as I recall. I think it was a, is it a twenty percent grant and an eighty percent loan or something like that? So I guess the, the bottom line is I think the city's credit rating will not actually um, you know, make any difference on this particular issue because I think the state is going to just sort of extend this uh, two percent rate to uh, to the, to the city.
If I may?
Yep, Mr. Taylor.
Called uh, Mr. Lindsay at Munistat. I think you're all familiar with him. Um, and he did confirm that it is a two percent loan uh, as, as Mr. Hamilton laid out.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Uh, does the board want more information on this or do you want to vote on this today? I got a head shake from Ms. Weiselman. Mr. Hamilton? Anyone else?
Uh, I'm fine voting on it today unless somebody wants to hold it, but uh, I, 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 I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay. Uh, motion made, seconded by Ms. Weiselman. Uh, all those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, motion carries. We can move on into uh, contract for the purchase of five vehicles for public works uh, from the state contract. Uh, this would be with Jangris Ford LLC. Um, quotes for the vehicles are in your packet and as I indicated, it's off the state contract. The city's here to provide an overview.
Yes, these are all uh, light-duty uh, truck, via pickup truck vehicles that'll be used for uh, Department of Public Works, all outfitted with the availability of plows uh, for the parking lots and uh, city properties that our city plows are too large for. Uh, these are included in the five-year capital plan. Uh, and uh, like I said, budgeted in the five-year capital plan and coming off a state contract.
Listen, just to clarify, I believe these were in the, in the fiscal twenty-three plan, right?
Twenty-three, correct.
Yeah, so these are, these were approved as part of the plan uh, over a year ago by the Marb.
And the total spend is three hundred seventy-three thousand, eight hundred forty-two dollars and forty cents.
Correct.
Mr. Hamilton? Take your hand up.
Sorry, I'll take my hand down.
Uh, questions concerning the five vehicles? Uh, those of us of a certain age uh, are amazed, I think, at how much it costs to buy motor vehicles these days, but.
Me too.
Uh, what can I say? Welcome to twenty-twenty-three. Um, all right, I'll entertain a motion then.
That we can also move.
Uh, Ms. Luciano moves, Ms. Comer seconds. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, we will next consider a, what is this? It's an increase in spending limits. Is this an existing? What are we doing here? City is using temporary workers to fill three vacant positions. A budget analyst, an ARPA accountant and a risk manager. Uh, city is requesting the Marb approve allocating additional funds to continue the services of the three temporary workers. I guess this is pursuant to a contract with Robert Half?
Yes, this is uh, we, we've been utilizing a, a national contract with Robert Half under the Houston-Galveston uh, area council contract. Uh, we've been using temporary staffing from Robert Half under that contract and we're just asking to uh, set an initial spend at two hundred thousand dollars.
What's the timeframe for getting these filled permanently?
It's a great question. That's.
That has been an ongoing problem with this city for my tenure.
The, the budget analyst uh, position, which really has morphed into being my assistant finance director type of role as well as my person who's filling in for another person who left a few months ago that we've not been able to replace. So that position I anticipate will be with us um, at least until uh, a, a mayor appoints a director of finance. Uh, in my role, as you know, I am both the finance director and the assistant finance director. So this is a very important role to me. And uh, you know, hey, it's been here for a little while. And, uh, you know, hey, it's been here for a little while and, uh, I would say somewhere for probably first quarter calendar year 24 would be the first chance I would see of, of that position going away. Uh, the second position, which is for ARPA, is being charged to, uh, is, is being paid for out of ARPA funds. Uh, we, we did bring somebody temporarily in for that who we were very fortunate to hire onto our team to, to fill another vacancy we had. Um, and, uh, we're actually right now looking for a new person. This is a full-time activity that theoretically will end sometime before the end of 2026. I'm not looking to increase permanent staff for this role. Uh, risk manager, our current risk manager is on leave, uh, for an unknown period of time. I felt it very important, um, not only to have somebody in place, uh, to handle the day-to-day, but also to kick, um, our handling of risk forward. Um, I, I believe I've spoken to this group before and I know I have in when I presented the plan, we talked about, uh, workers comp, general liability, costs going through the roof and we needed to do something different. Having, uh, I found a very experienced, uh, tenured, uh, risk manager, uh, who recently retired. Uh, and, uh, Robert Half was able to bring that one to, to me and, and he's doing a fantastic job. So, um, well, I would, um, the end period, that was a long way to tell you, will be, yeah, when and if we have permanent replacements. Right now I can't hire a risk manager because I have one on leave.
Mr. Luciano?
So having, having enough management staff that are looking at the book has been a real problem pretty much since, uh, West Haven came into the Marb. Uh, and I really, I'm not sure that having temporary positions trying to fill, um, positions that should be permanent full-time is the best way to do this. And then having temporary positions actually make sure you're not in any hurry to, to try to fill permanent positions. And so, given those concerns, I really, I, I really think, um, we need to take a look at this.
So if, if I could answer?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, um, the director, the finance director is an appointed position. Uh, in order to an appoint, to appoint a finance director, you need to find someone who's willing to take the role. Our mayor will be out of office at the end of No- November. We'll have a new administration. On the first day of December, that finance director would have had to submit his resignation. So therefore there's no, uh, there's no way to appoint a finance director until December. Um, so, uh, that, that is that role. Uh, the other role that we just talked about, uh, we have a risk manager, um, that is on leave. When and if that leave en- ends, I will immediately start looking to replace that role. But at this point, my hands are the ARPA position is a temporary position and will run out.
Okay. Mr. Hamilton?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think, um, Mr. Taylor makes a pretty, you know, strong argument for using, uh, you know, a, a, a temp agency for these three positions. Um, I, I do agree. My issue with temp agencies, uh, Robert Half has some very good people that they've supplied, but it tends to be quite expensive, uh, more expensive than full-time employees. Uh, so my question really is have you identified a funding source, uh, to cover these costs? But assuming you have, then I, I think you have made, uh, you know, a good, uh, case for these three positions.
Yeah, we do have vacancies, um, that are funding this. Um, my, my, in the risk, with the exception of the risk manager, I'm trapped into paying two people for that role right now. So, uh, we may have to dip into a little contingency, which, which there's plenty of right now, but, but so we'll see.
Other questions about this item? Well, I think you have a sense of the board's frustration on this. Uh, I would underscore Mr. Luciano's, uh, concerns about, uh, we really do need some of these positions done ASAP, but I know you're in a process that, uh, will take you through the end of the current mayor's term. Uh.
May I?
Yes, Ms. Kenneth.
Um, in addition, we have, um, really, uh, stressed and pressed the existing staff that is sitting in West Haven with these vacancies of trying to cover two positions and, uh, no end in sight on top of bringing in other firms to do organizational assessment, financial assessment. And we don't have staffing there to help with the existing work when we need process improvement to be done. In order to get this process improvement done and get in the controls put in play, it requires some one-time staffing to be able to ramp this up. And, um, I just want you to be aware that I did support and I do support, um, the situation that the existing staff is in and that one, we don't want to experience burnout. We don't want to lose those people that are already here and we are, uh, working them a little bit hard, um, lately and they do need some relief.
Other questions, comments concerning this item? I'll entertain a motion. Going once.
I will, uh, move to approve, uh, the request.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Westelberg. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstentions.
Mr. Luciano is abstaining and Ms. Comer is abstaining. All right, let the record reflect. Um, motion carries, however. So next item is, uh, city's looking to acquire a used freightliner rubbish truck uh, from sanitary equipment company incorporated. Uh, it will replace an existing rubbish truck. Um, do we call it rubbish? Isn't that a British term? Don't we say garbage in America? I don't know.
I think our fleet manager is, uh, is, is a little aristocratic.
Is he English? Okay.
I think he's aristocratic, that's all.
Rubbish. I think you have to say it with a British accent, rubbish truck. Uh, so in the pack.
Sounds nicer. I, I will say our current truck is rubbish.
Okay. In the packet is a quote from sanitary equipment company and the city can provide an overview. How much is this gonna cost?
$122,000.
This is for a used, a used rubbish truck is $120,000.
We're in the wrong business, I'm guessing. So, uh, yeah, $122,000 for a used rubbish truck. Uh, it was originally budgeted for $170,000. So, you know, we're looking at a savings of $48,000 from what we budgeted for. Uh, the funding source is a combination of
That, that's how my wife explains purchases, by the way. It's always how much I've saved. I've saved all this money, honey. Look how much it was saving.
Yeah. How can you not buy it when you're saving that much money? So.
Yeah.
My wife does the same thing. Uh, the funding source is a combination of a 2022 bond and revenue from the Connecticut State Nip Bottle Program, uh, that we've received from the state. Uh, this is a freightliner 2017. It's an 18-yard, uh, trash truck, which makes it more accessible for our parking lots and, uh, the, the, the truck we have now is used more for, uh, leaf bag pickup and, uh, uh, long, you know, larger pick loads. This is, uh, this is easier for our boardwalk and for our beach parking lots, uh, to get in and empty the trucks. Right now we're loading the cans onto pickup trucks, bringing them to a, to a dumpster and dumping them that way and then having that dumpster carted to, uh, tipping, uh, to a transfer station. So it's a lot more, uh, efficient this way.
Okay. Any questions about the rubbish truck? Do I, uh, I'll entertain a motion?
Sal Luciano, some more.
Mr. Luciano moves.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Comer. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Um, next item is the Board of Education, uh, has a contract, pending contract with the Winkle Bus Company, uh, to provide school transportation for the school year.
Mr. Secretary.
Yes, ma'am.
I do not think that this information has been provided to us yet. Um, to my knowledge, I would just like to go back to Matt and as well as the OPM team to, to confirm that we have not received this contract.
It is in the hands of our attorney right now. They're, they're, they're writing the final contract.
Can it wait till our next meeting?
It's blindsided right now. So we would be approving something with nothing in hand.
Yeah, we're, uh, uh, please don't, uh, Mr. We're not asking that you approve it. Um, I, I'm not even sure how it, or I know we've talked about it before and maybe that's why it made the agenda. But we're actually writing, uh, again, our attorney is in the process of, of finalizing, you know, the agreement and we should have it to you. I thought we might have it to you for this meeting.
Correct.
It just didn't make it. And I apologize for that.
Motion is full until next meeting.
All right, hang on a second. Mr. Hamilton has his hand up.
Yeah, I, um, saw this on the agenda. I, we, we spoke about it last month, I believe. And, um, I was concerned at that point because of the fact there was only one bidder on this contract and, um, it, it occurs to me after thinking about it more that, uh, uh, it was, that, uh, securing competitive bids requires, you know, a lot of time for potential bidders. Uh, because, uh, you know, they need to secure school buses, which are expensive and have a long lead time. Uh, the, one of the big issues typically is where are the buses going to be stored? And if the school district does not have a, uh, bus storage location and you're requiring your vendor to procure a location, uh, that is also a time-consuming, you know, task. And so really to, uh, get competitive quotes or bids on a transportation contract, you really need to start probably almost a year in advance and you need to be opening your bids probably in December at, at the latest to consider a change for the following school year. And I, I don't think that happened this last time. Uh, you know, I suspect the bid was put out, you know, sometime in the late spring and, and I think it really became sort of a perfunctory kind of bid exercise where uh, the only, only the incumbent essentially was going to be in a position to bid. And so it, it leads me to think that really perhaps the best option, uh, is to uh, try again for next year and to look at a one-year contract, uh, for this year. Uh, so, um, since this contract has not yet been approved, I would, uh, I'd like to throw that on the table to see what board members think and see what the district thinks. I, you know, I know that, uh, the intention was a five-year contract, but since, um, there was really not a competitive process when this was put out to bid, uh, I, I would, uh, think it would be helpful to try that process again.
Let me, let me respond to that, Tom. If you don't mind, let me, let me answer that. First of all, I'll take, uh, you know, as many of you know, Winkle's been with us probably 30 to 40 years. Uh, certainly prior to me even becoming a teacher, never mind superintendent of schools. It, as far as I know, they've always received a bid waiver. We've asked you guys in the last five years ago, you approved a bid waiver too, and, uh, there's no question, the Marb made it clear that this time they wanted the process, they, they wanted the bid process to be put in place. With that, again, this I'll apologize for, we put it out in early April, thinking that that would give us enough time if we, again, not knowing, again, not knowing what the timeframe needed to be. Well, um, Winkle was the only bidder, however, and Winkle's a small local company. Winkle dramatically increased their prices because we put it out to bid. However, they were still more competitive than some of what the larger companies would be. Tom, you mentioned that we should have discussions with, uh, some of the bigger companies. We did that. The, the company, the two companies we spoke to basically said the same thing. If you're looking at pure price per run, we can't compete with a, a local vendor. By the way, they were familiar with West Haven. They were familiar with West Haven's relationship with Winkle Bus Company. But they basically said, you know, if you're just looking at the price, you're not going to compete with Winkle. Cause Matt and I, and, and in the meantime, Matt and I were talking about, well, what if we were to do maybe a one-year extension? The problem with the one-year extension is that Winkle, who we're negotiating with down, increased their prices from $260 a run to $370 a run. I got them down now to $290 a run with, with gradual increases over the next five years. If I were to do a one-year extension, the problem is they're not going to give me that rate and I don't have the money to pay the 370 per run in the, what, 70% increase in the, in the price. So again, I'll take the responsibility of not putting it out to bid on time. Again, we, we put all of the other bids out on time. Sedexo, uh, the security and we thought the bus would go out around. They all went out around the same time. However, uh, we're in a dilemma right now. If you told me to go out to bid again, I understand it. The problem is going to be where am I going to get the money to, to pay Winkle for the one-year extension, which they're gonna kill me with? So that's where I am right now. Um, again, I'll tell you what the, the other companies, frankly, what they said is what you don't get with the larger companies are the extras. The dispatcher who, you know, was more attentive, where we do a lot of that work internally now at, at the school level. Uh, we don't get the GPSs. We don't get some of the extras. Uh, in fact, one of the companies said to us, you know, find the money, rip the Band-Aid off and go with a company that's going to give you a better service. And, you know, we understand that, but we just don't have the money to pay for it.
Mr. Luciano?
One of the curses of being on for so long on the Marb is, is unfortunately remembering certain things. And I remember when Ben Barnes, um, said to Mayor Rossi, when he said, I, I came across a letter that's a few months old and it's from the bus company and they said that they would reduce the amount by $100,000 if we, if we stayed with them.
And the That, that was the last contract. I don't think that had anything to do with this contract today that went out to bid.
That's not my point. My point is that at the time, Ben Barnes asked, when was the last time that we put out the bid? And the response was about 10 years ago. And so here we are once again with the lack of competitive bidding. Now, I'm not blaming you, Neil. I'm, I'm just saying this is a, a long-term frustration with this administration.
Mr. Cavalero, any further comment?
Li- listen, I, I respect, uh, Tom's comments that he made the last time. We looked into it. Again, the timing, no question, the timing was wrong, but we had it, or I hadn't put it out to bid in my tenure superintendent. This is my 15th year. Um, so this is the first time we put it out. I, I, I just, again, the, the increase right now, maybe we do rip the Band-Aid off, but it's going to be at the expense of instruction and probably will impact what we do with our kids. Can do with our kids.
Um, to Tom and to Sal, just to play devil's advocate a little bit, I appreciate as much as anyone the principles of, uh, open and competitive procurement. But the point of open and competitive procurement is to try and get the best value for the taxpayer. And it sounds like the city has made an assessment about the value. Um, there's no indication, I'm not aware of any evidence that this company has some undue, uh, I mean, other than having had the contract all these years, has some undue influence in terms of getting the thing. They do appear to have made an economic decision about, uh, this service and have concluded that this is the most economical, best value. Um, just to play devil's advocate.
Perhaps that's true. On the other hand, the fact that, you know, six years ago, when they heard that the it was going to go out to compare the bid, they undercut themselves by $100,000. So, you know, I, I just have concerns. Um, it's, it, this company may be the best company that's out there. I'm, I'm just saying with the lack of competitive bid, bidding for 15 years, we don't know that.
Okay. Fair point.
I, I, here's what, again, just a quick response and again, I, it is certainly your call and I respect it. I don't know if they're the best company out there. They're certainly the cheapest. I don't know if they're the best company out there. They're certainly the cheapest. I think we we can agree. We looked into what other district charged, and they're still below what the average is. And unfortunately, right now, that's the position we're in. We're we're taking the lowest bid, and it's not like there are an unknown company coming in to lowball a bit and get us. We do have a a working relationship with them.
Other comments from the board? Well, obviously, we'll have a chance to chew on this when you bring the contract to us. If it's for one year or five years, I guess that's a debate we can have. You've heard the concerns.
We heard them five years ago, and we tried to address them. I apologize that we, again, our timing was off.
Well, we'll renew this discussion, I guess, in a couple of weeks, it sounds like. I'll leave it at that unless some other members of the board have other questions or or comments. So we'll then move on. The next item is to adjourn, but before I do that, let me just mention that we are, we've rescheduled the Marb from the 7th of September to the 14th of December. Thursday, September 14 is our next regular meeting. Well, is that a special meeting? Has to be a special meeting at this point because we've moved it off the regular meeting schedule. So it's a special meeting, 14 September. Anything else for the good of the order? Board members want to raise?
Cannot.
I let me thank the participants from the city today. Appreciate your joining us on a remote, which I don't care for. I like these in person. We'll try to do in person in September. So with that, I have nothing else.
We have the LOB for September on the 14th.
Great.
Thank you all. We appreciate you giving us your time today.
Yes, because this was a holiday. This is the month that we allow our members to take the month off. So thank all of the members for coming forward and supporting both the cities.
And thank you for your comments.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
David, Bill, or some more?
All right, motion's been made. It's not debatable. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We'll see you on September 14.
Have a good weekend.
Bye now.